We'll go ahead and call the order of the regular council meeting of Monday, April 21st, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, as we gather for this meeting, we ask for your guidance and wisdom in our discussions. Help us to listen attentively to one another, speak with respect, and make decisions that honor you and serve the common good. May our hearts be open to your will and our minds focused on finding solutions that benefit all. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll try to rank out somebody else from one of the churches that you've written next week for our next council meeting. Does the council entertain a motion to approve the agenda? We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion passes. Does the council entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 7th, 2025? We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion passes. Under nominations for recognition, does the council have any nominations for recognition?
I would like to nominate Jen Womack for all the things that she's done on Main Street. The face of her building, she got a new door, she's got a new sign, she's always got stuff going on. She's still in love for our town on Main Street, so I think she's a great asset for our town.
Excellent. Is there any further nominations for recognition? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to certificate of recognition for Greg Stumpf and Public Works crew. Greg, thanks for working so hard for our town and going down to Cheyenne and bringing us back lots of money. So, uh, I'd like to give that one to you. And then the Public Works crew for trying to pick up the slack when you're out of the office. I appreciate that.
There are a few things I think everybody needs to understand about the grant process. There is no one person that does all of it. It's a team effort. Yeah, the Public Works staff covers the work that I do normally when I'm gone. But I also ask them to review documents, help create a better document again, to create a better grant, a better opportunity. Kurt Agnew, she, her nurse staff do quite better. The financials, the financials are huge. They're never questioned. So, that's a big one. Engineer Bartman, after the fact, takes care of the pay requests and pay reimbursements, keeps us in compliance. Then there's two others that have been really great for me and very helpful, and that superintendent Mark Lindstrom and Kelly Malar from Upton. They offered to let me write their coat tales two years ago, and that's how we kind of got started into this. I went down to Cheyenne with them and heard what two say, and better yet, what not to say, a lot of times. Granted, it's me standing up at the podium at the beginning, but there is another group of people that really need to, everybody really needs to understand. That's the mayors and the councils, council members. They allowed me the opportunity and the leeway to spearhead this and take off with it. The council also made some tough decisions. One was rate analysis. It's unquestioned. You show that to the powers that be down in Cheyenne, they, they say, great, perfect, you're banging at it. That's what they want to see. And the rate increase in rates. That's one of the first things I always ask, when was the last time you did a rate increase? We can tell them we did that. And that's all you folks do. So this isn't just me. This is a huge team effort amongst a whole lot of people, so.
Thanks for picking up my slack and making sure everybody got their recognition, Greg. Moving on to citizens business verbal. There is no citizens business verbal, so moving on to citizens business in writing. Dakota Wire Works request for an electrical license. Looks like all their fees have been paid and copies of their state license and proof of insurance and bond have been approved for 2025. Do we have a motion to accept the electrical license for Dakota Wire Works Inc., DBA Dakota Electric out of St. Anne, South Dakota?
Do we know anything about them?
I don't know anything about them. Do we have room for more electrical licenses? And then they want to come and do business in our town? I don't see any.
I move we approve their license, Your Honor.
We have a motion properly seconded to approve the electrical license for Dakota Wire Works Inc., DBA Dakota Electric. I think I missed, like, reading off the electrician's names. That's kind of customary, isn't it, Owen?
Yeah, I would do that.
Just so everyone knows. Sorry, everybody. So we'll go ahead and name the master. Oh, yeah, is there any discussion? So now we'll go ahead and name the master. Electrician is Brent Olson. Journeyman electrician is Kyle Veltman and Benjamin Beatles. And the apprentice is Joshua Long and Cameron Stern. Is there any further discussion?
Does it say, do they primarily do residential, um, commercial?
I don't have much backstory here.
Because I do know that, you know, there's, there's a need for residential electricians. We have 21 Electric and we have Rex Electric. But a lot of times, they're so busy doing commercial and industrial that it's really hard to get an electrician. So I think bringing in another electrician would be very beneficial, especially if they do residential.
All I have in the packet is just proof that they have, they're bonded and insured and then their license from South Dakota. So I don't know. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion passes. Uh, moving on to second item, Linda Hunt, Second Block of Sage Street. So from Linda Hunt to the city of Newcastle dated April 14th, 2025. Subject, Second Block of Sage Street, request for consideration. The majority of the public or of the street slash public use ways in Newcastle, public use ways in Newcastle are 50 feet wide from boundary to boundary. The east second block of Sage Street is undeveloped, and that's okay.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy. We have a bootlegger's liquor. The deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
The east second block of Sage Street is undeveloped, and that's okay. So would the city please consider using a patrol on that street to even it across its full width to include the once-proposed bike path and its full length to the drainage? Remove the brush, cut up tree pieces, stumps, debris, et cetera, in that entire width, so water runoff has nothing to hold it back, in parentheses. The purpose would be so the city riding mowers can groom that occasionally. And in parentheses, and the bike path on Duff Street and ditch, so it looks somewhat like Cambria Creek. The state of Wyoming has declared invasive species and noxious weeds. Both are heavily present in that area. State forestry staff has previously showed me a very invasive wood-like vine there, and of course, the Russian olives are considered invasive. Also, there are many noxious invasive weeds there to include thistle, creeping Jenny, et cetera. There are weeds in that public use way that grow over six feet tall. This overgrowth also draws wildlife because of the cover and food it provides. Skunks, occasionally fox, raccoon, coy, and mostly mice and bull, which in turn attract lots of snakes. In parentheses, I have actually seen cat services mow over thick weed stands and watch them hit snake dens with hundreds of baby snakes coming out of them every which direction. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, currently, the Duff Avenue project is using that area for storage of materials. We did make the choice that during the removal of trees in order to put in the sewer line we installed there, we did remove all the Russian olives out of the right way. There are no Russian olives left. The stones have been removed. Everything that's left is overhanging from other property that we, is not worth to trade. As far as blading it or doing any kind of grade work at all, there's no sense in doing that until the Duff Avenue project is completed. Right now, they're storing bedding material for the pipe, and they're not done installing pipe and manholes yet. So I really don't want to leave their pile right into the ground where they cannot utilize it. They still have manholes and pipes staying there. Once we get the materials to the lift station there, here, they'll stage there as well. So we're, we're far from done with this until probably July or August. We'll do what we can to keep the weeds away, but we have removed this. If the council wants anything else, let me know.
When we put the pipe and stuff in there, did you happen to, you know, smush some of those six-foot weeds?
Oh, yes.
Oh, good.
No, it's fairly flat. It's so flat, people can drive through the drainage now. From one end to the other, across the sidewalk and everything else. Because they started driving through, which is why the brush there was as bare.
My neighborhood does have skunks.
Yeah. Yeah, I have skunks in my house.
I heard somebody shooting at them. Oh. I heard pop, 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 pop.
Those are black kids. Unless you want me to do something while we're doing the project, there really isn't much to do until the project's complete. When we did do the grade work for the ditch, we did level everything out at that time. But there again, we dug in a sewer line there and manhole and.
So when it's all done, you will do something?
Part of their, part of their project is to grade everything and put it back.
Okay. I think that's all we, all we can ask for.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Is there some way we could let Linda Hunt know that?
She, she, are you live streaming this, Walter? No?
Recording.
Will you post it on Facebook?
It will be posted once I process it, but we've had problems with live streaming, so I'm just recording. I'll download it and process it later.
Because the council, I think Stacy and I could probably draft a wire presentation to you. Make that out better.
Thank you. That'd be good.
Okay. Thanks, Greg. Uh, moving on to old business. Uh, ordinance number one, series 2025, Farnsworth Dollar General Annexation, third reading. Ordinance number one, 2025, an ordinance annexing territory described in the petition for annexation dated January 10th, 2025. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Newcastle, Weston County, Wyoming. Section one, annexation of territory. The city council of the city of Newcastle does hereby annex the following described real property and improvements pursuant to the petition for annexation originally dated January 10th, 2025 and filed with the city clerk. Section two, compliance with Wyoming statute 15-1-403. The petition for annexation filed with the city clerk is signed and dated by all landowners owning the area sought to be annexed and contains a legal description of the area sought to be annexed. A request, uh, the described property be annexed, a statement each signer is an owner of the land and description of this land within the area proposed to be annexed and contained a map of the area all in compliance with Wyoming statute 15-1-403. Section three, compliance with Wyoming statute 15-1-403 subsection C and D. City, uh, Newcastle city clerk, within 10 days from the date, uh, the petition for annexation was filed, determined the petition substantially complied with the requirements of Wyoming statute 15-1-403 and certified compliance of the petition pursuant to the provisions of Wyoming statute 15-1-403 subsection B. Section four, public hearing, the governor, governing body of the city of Newcastle established a date, time, and place for a public hearing to determine if the proposed annexation complies with provisions of Wyoming statute 15-1-402. And the public hearing determines the following. Section five, effective date, the ordinance shall be in full force and effective, uh, and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication. Uh, do we have a motion to approve ordinance number one, 2020, series 2025? On third reading.
So, number one, series 2025, on third read.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just have one question for Dublin. When, when these things come up to the council on this particular piece of property, there's a very old, pretty old building on that. Could we have put in here as part of this annexation that they remove that building?
That part's not being annexed.
It is not? Well, that's the only reason I was for, was to get rid of that building.
Or the building is, is not?
Anyway, my question, could we have done that?
So there's generally, there's quite a few different things you can, you know, do an annexation for in terms of different properties coming into the city and being under the purview of the city. As far as I can tell, I do recall, I believe in Sundance, there were a few times that that had somebody, if they wanted to annex something in, they were required to clean up said property or whatever it may be. But as of doing that right now, as being required, I'm not entirely sure. I'd have to look into that.
I wouldn't want to put it on this one because it's too late.
Well, if, if it's not even on the property, it's not much we can do, but.
Honestly, God, I thought it was, that's who, I thought we were, that's the property we're annexing to. Okay, thank you.
It's only a partial, Tom. The, I'm not sure where my map's at. We did that map that showed it east of the building between, uh, where along is that there? And the, yeah, the auto end and the building itself. And we're only taking part of, there's an L shape that's still out.
Okay.
On the west side and rip down the north end.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed.
Those are the types of questions and conversations you have to have without telling people they're stupid, without boycotting people's businesses, and without making someone an enemy for life. We have to have the conversations about this stuff. And you're right, people are now starting to figure out what all these services are costing, and it's because the conversations are more open and transparent.
Well, I think that, you know, a lot of people were the, at the meeting where we hate districts, we hate districts. But I think that the, trying to create these districts is what makes people talk about what we spend money on. You've got taxing districts for your museum, your hospital, your fair, your this, your that. It is an ambulance and making sure you guys have EMS services in Weston County more important than making sure that you have a museum or a county fair. Those are the discussions that people are going to have to have when you're talking about whether you have an ambulance to.
Those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed. Signify by saying nay. Motion passes. On third reading of ordinance number one, series 2025. Moving on to ordinance number two, series 2025, public nuisance of dog or cat. Uh, is this first reading? Or is this going to be second reading? Second reading? Ordinance number two, series 2025, an ordinance amending ordinance section four dash 12 of the Newcastle Town Code. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Newcastle, Weston County, Wyoming. Section four dash 12 of the Newcastle, Wyoming Municipal Code, the amended reading and its entry is follows. It shall be unlawful for any dog or cat owner to keep a dog or cat that is public nuisance or permit a dog or cat to be a public nuisance or permit, excuse me. Inflection counts sometimes. Uh, and each day that such a dog or cat is kept or permitted to be a public nuisance shall constitute a separate offense. A dog or cat shall be deemed in public nuisance if said dog or cat, A, excessively barks, howls, or yowls while outdoors and disturbs the peace and tranquility of any person; B, chases motor vehicles, bicycles, or persons on foot; or C, destroys or injures property. Does the council entertain a motion to pass ordinance number two, series 2025, on second reading? We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Counsel, if I may. I just want to be clear on this. The, the cross off on what we have here is amended. It crosses it out on two or more occasions and then the semicolon and or. My intent with this was to cross out on two or more occasions and leave the semicolon and the or. The reason being is, um, in court, let's say, if somebody were to be arguing this, it would have to be two elements without that or. The B, the A, and the B.
So do we need to amend the motion to include the or?
Okay, I amend my motion to include the or under portion eight of the ordinance number two, 25.
Do we have a second? Do we have a motion properly seconded? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Is there any discussion? Do you have some?
Yes, I read the paper. And there's a misprint on this number two. And the only thing I got to say is it said, if dogs are not allowed to bark at all. There was a misprint in the Newcastle paper. And I read that whole article. So you said if it's, if the dog barks constantly. But if you let your dog outside to go to the restroom, it's not supposed to bark at all.
Yeah. So will you let the paper know that they?
It's in the Newcastle paper on the shelf right now.
Okay. Will you let them know for us?
I let, I let her know. City, Stacy.
Okay. Well, thanks for making us aware, Kathy.
No, it's, I'm not taking it, nobody.
No.
People make mistakes and they write mistakes. You know, just like, uh, the other day I'm trying to help fix something in the house and I made a mistake and my husband sat me outside and said, you're just missed.
Well, thank you for making us aware, Kathy. We'll go ahead and move on. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion passes. Moving on to Newcastle Youth Softball League, MOU. I ended up getting some traffic in the mayor email. Uh, it was from Ashley Cooper. She provided me with another MOU, and the language has been, uh, changed quite a bit. And it also contained signatures from all the other parties that utilize, uh, the, uh, the field. So, um, I believe all the parties since we have signatures are in favor of, uh, passing the MOU. Nobody was able to attend, even though I invited them. So I, I don't know if the council wants to entertain a motion to approve the MOU or maybe we invite them to the next council meeting and see if somebody. I, I would like some kind of confirmation. I mean, I, I don't know Brian Mefford's signature. I've never seen it before. I, I don't know Jennifer Lip's signature, so I, I don't know if the council wants to maybe have me invite them to the next council meeting or.
Can I ask a question? Do they need this sign to start doing stuff, though?
Well, it was my interpretation, what, the information that I was provided, that they had been in collaboration with each other. They, they worked out all the kinks and they were ready to move forward in a positive direction. So I didn't expect to see, um, another MOU come across the dais. So I, I don't know. Just, uh, to me, it just seems. So I, I don't know, just, uh, to me it just seems like.
I think that you should invite them and we just say, okay. We wanted to do that because you should, because this is a memorandum of understanding by the all three of them. It's not just the soccer league, the softball league, the baseball league, it's a, it's all three of them. But I think it's, you're, you're, it's a good thing.
Well, I do too, but are we holding them up from doing any kind of?
I don't think so.
Okay, that's my question.
She asked, use it to twenty seven.
Right.
Or could we just send them a nice letter and say, hey, you got it? We approve.
I mean, I don't think we should hold them up.
Do we even need to approve this?
I don't know.
I have a question on the schedule at the bottom of it in the parentheses. I would take it it's just for the season. But when you put it in the words of the context, there is being rescheduling, means trump all activities on field two. So does that mean that anything that happens on that field two, if they have something planned, they have priority even outside of season?
Mr. Mayor, also, I have a question about number four on the back page. They're requesting we move a, move the shed on the skids to field two. We had to move out of that area to allow for the underground utilities. We really don't want to put shed on top of sprinkler system, electrical lines, all this sort of stuff. There really is no place we could put it there. That's why we moved it to where we did.
So maybe when we have them at the next council meeting, then we, I don't believe that this memorandum of understanding is gonna prohibit anybody from using the fields or. I thought they all got together and agreed on all of this. Um, I thought there would be some representation here tonight. Uh, being that there's not, um, do we have a motion to reschedule this to the next meeting? Uh, when we have them all invited and then maybe we can, uh, strike number four from the memorandum of understanding as, uh, when we approve it. And maybe we can, uh, strike number four from the memorandum of understanding as, uh, when we approve it.
There's nothing else you can do?
The area is so tight and so uneven because of the way we had to build the shop over there. We used to set where the shop is, well, now it's on slopes to correct wire from building up around the building. It would take us a good amount of effort to level it out, you know? Sprinkler systems on both sides of the edges of the field, on the outside of the field. We moved all the control boxes, electrical, everything out from underneath the fields. So there was nothing in plain field except sprinkler heads. I think that was the whole purpose of it.
Do we have a MOA for the other two? The soccer league and the, and the baseball league?
Uh, I don't know whether I can, um, for either of them.
This starts off.
Yeah, this is all.
But it says the Newcastle baseball league, the Newcastle softball, youth softball association, Newcastle soccer league, that's a great one.
So it's all.
This is by all three.
We've never had one before.
Well, the one before was just first and we denied it, right?
Right, what he said, we've never had one.
Now, this is, this is kind of new territory.
They're laying it in the form.
I think so, I'm doing that one meeting.
That was my question as we begin this discussion.
We would appreciate it because we finally have dates when they're gonna start and we've never been able to get that information on a regular basis.
Okay.
So it, it does help our department plan for certain things. Having the dates is very helpful and knowing who to contact. Here shortly we'll be doing meeting feed on the fields. We can't allow them to play on the fields for like twenty-four to forty-eight hours. We now have contacts to be able to tell them to staff the fields for a little while so we can improve the grass.
So we entertain a motion to reschedule, uh, this to our next council meeting?
So what?
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
When we have them come, could we, could we ask them? Because what he said, this serves our, our shop. And so I think they say they want these every year. And we, we could request that at that time.
Yeah, you can talk to them about it. Helps them about, is there any other discussion? Any other discussion, Colonel? Okay, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion passes. Moving on to new business, there's no new business. Moving on to committee and council member reports, uh, parents committee.
So we met last week to go over the application for sidewalk encroachment. Permit. Reading through the ordinance, we felt that the ordinance spelled everything out pretty well. The only thing lacking was a fee to go along with the permit and kind of a timeframe. Um, what we kind of came up with, um, is breaking it down by quarter. At twenty-five dollars a quarter. And then, uh, obviously during festivals like Madison Mesa, stuff like that, there would be an exemption for those. Um, but for everyday dining merchandise, those types of things, to have that on the sidewalk as written in the ordinance, there will be the, the fee for the permit. I missed anything, John?
Nope, sounds good to me. The ordinance pretty well covers everything. It just didn't have the price and the time, timeframe on it.
So does the committee want to make a recommendation of the council to approve the permit?
Yeah, uh, the, the committee would, uh, recommend the council approve the twenty-five dollar application fee per quarter for the permit.
So we have a motion?
Yes. I make the motion.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion properly seconded to approve the, uh, uh, sidewalk encroachment permit uh, with the added associated fees. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion passes. Thanks, Chris. Uh, moving on to police committee.
All right, well, the police committee met after meeting on the seventh and discussed some, um, issues, I guess, we had with some evidence of storing at the county, evidence building, storage area at the county shop. Um, there is no security cameras and things at that facility. Um, that could have probably caught some other activity that went on with some evidence that were being stored there. Uh, we did get a cost back on some cameras. Uh, the other two members of the committee hadn't really had a chance to sit down and review and talk about them tonight. I felt that, um, we wanted to probably have another committee meeting with the chief to discuss some options because some things we discussed that night and figure out, um, if we wanted to offer to pay for cameras with the county or what other option, um, you know, paying an annual fee with them. So as of right now, we don't have, you know, anything that we want to bring to the council as a recommendation but what we're looking into for potential extra security options for this area.
Thank you, Councilman Stevenson. Uh, so you guys all work together to try to find a good time to meet again?
At least we've got some costs now for the cameras. And it'll give us a little bit more things to discuss with the chief and maybe with the sheriff. Um, and what he's thinking that he would want some involvement from us in the city with it.
High power, a little.
All right, uh, is there anything further to report on that?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Um, moving on to Harvard Growth Lab. I was kind of late on the punch sending out the invite to everybody. So, uh, uh, we attended a meeting today at, uh, one o'clock for the Harvard Growth Lab. Uh, Clark Taggerty and myself attended it. She sent out the invite, everybody. Did, did everybody receive the invite?
I hope they were about three o'clock.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom. I should have, I should have called it.
It was one thirty.
You tried, Mayor, you tried.
Yeah, did, did everybody else get it? And did you get it?
I didn't get it.
You didn't see it? Okay, sorry about that. I'll try to make sure.
I did all my.
The future correspondence is a little bit more timely. We, uh, it was a, uh, uh, Google meet, meeting. They, uh, it was, it was basically a preliminary meeting. So Randy Harlow with the Business Council was in attendance. And then, uh, a bunch of the members of the Harvard Growth Lab. A couple of them, Tim, there was two Tims. And then, uh, one of the Tims had actually been out to the area. He's been working on the project with communities in Wyoming for, uh, for two and a half years. Uh, so he's been to Crook County and he's been to some of the surrounding counties, but he's never been to Weston County. Uh, they basically just asked, um, you know, if we could tell them about the town. And then I just rambled on like you guys know that I have a tendency to do sometimes. And, and I told them everything I know about Newcastle. And then, uh, uh, Stacy was able to, uh, provide support whenever I would stumble. And so together we, we, we painted the picture for the Harvard Growth Lab. And then, uh, there were some follow-up questions. They asked, uh, you know, about what our main street is like. Uh, what businesses have been longstanding businesses and which businesses have kind of failed.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today. And we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
About what our main street is like, uh, what businesses have been longstanding businesses and which businesses have kind of failed. So then we provided some background to that. And then, um, then there was a follow-up question from another, uh, member of the, of their board that was, uh, about, uh, where the bulk of our employment is located in our community. So of course we talked about the Wyoming Refining Company and, and then, then there was a question about where the bulk of the, the work is outside of our community. And, uh, we told them, you know, uh, the coal line, you know, and so, uh, anyway, they, they said they had lots of other follow-up questions. And then they would really like for the council to attend, uh, the next one that isn't quite so preliminary. You're gonna have a lot of follow-up questions. And then, um, so I'll make sure and get you guys lots of advance notice.
Would you like to hear a big screen?
Yeah, so then I was like looking and I'm not super well-equipped for hosting meetings with the piece of equipment that I purchased. So, uh, but we can, we can get it figured out, especially if, uh, if we get a plan and, and lots of them in, in advance. So.
Tell us what they do.
So they, they basically, um, they assist communities, uh, we're the pilot program. They, they're, they're assisting sovereign communities in Wyoming with economic development type activities, right? So they're kind of like a think tank, right? And they all, so we were the first meeting of this pilot program. So they got to listen to me jabbering on about stuff and, and so, uh, hopefully I, I didn't mess up the next mayor that's gonna do the same thing. And, uh, and then we, uh, uh, they said, uh, you know, we, you, you weren't expecting us to like give you answers this meeting. And I said, no, I, I figured this was a preliminary meeting, so, um, that I didn't have any expectations, you know? And so they're gonna, they're gonna type, take the information that they were provided and then they're gonna ask their follow-up questions at the next meeting. So, um, I'll, like I said, I'll make sure that you guys get way more advanced notice. I've just been running pretty hard lately. I was tied up last week and week before and it's just been a mess, so.
Could we get a, a, a list of their questions prior to the meeting?
I could ask them, yeah.
And that way we, we could maybe prepare some intelligent answers.
That's, that's an excellent idea, Tom. I'll, uh, I'll, I'll ask them that.
Don't forget the oil field the next time.
Oh, I, I told them about that too, Kathy.
They were too, you know?
Yeah, it was, uh, I was really racking my brain. It was an hour-long meeting. Um, I talked about M and K Oil. I talked about some of the, uh, service providers. Oh, what's that?
Ranchers helped provide for this case.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I talked about some of my ideas too that I've had for.
I'm just trying to help you out since, uh, next month I'll be here for sixty years.
Oh, wow, that's a good run, Kathy.
I was born up there on the hill.
On the hill, yeah.
Yep, ask Dr. Franz, he ain't here no more.
Oh, he had a good run though. Yeah. Um, does anybody else have any questions about the Harvard Growth Lab? Make sure you're all included next time. I'm sorry for the delayed, um, invitation. All right, moving on, uh, to department head reports. Clark Treasure, Stacy Hagary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I provided the council with our, um, employee insurance rates. This is something that's to do at the end of the month. So just revisiting this, um, our new rates we did, um, budget for in our, at our budget workshop. So just asking the council if they have any thoughts or if they're willing to approve us to continue with our employee insurance.
Is this similar to the, all the insurance that we have, it's all kind of throughout the, all the communities and, and like that?
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's the same, um, the county goes through the W E B T, it's the Educators Benefit Trust.
Well, coming from you, is this a good plan for you?
I am very appreciative of having the insurance, yes.
Okay, all right.
So the top number on the rates and the renew rates at fifteen hundred, is that the deductible or?
Yep, that's the deductible.
I mean, the motion we approved it.
Second.
Yeah, motion properly seconded. Uh, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Sir?
What percentage of the rate went up, or what percentage over last year did the rate rise?
Seven percent for medical, dental stayed the same. And then our vision, the employees pay our vision and that stayed the same as well.
That's not bad. Thank you.
Having been a former employee at the city shop, this was always a wonderful benefit for our crew. And it was a great incentive for employer retention. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion passes.
And that's all it happens to me.
Thank you. Does anybody have any further questions for Clark Treasure or Stacy Hagerty? No? Okay. Moving on to Public Works Supervisor Greg Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item. I had spoken with people down at Shawanah Office of State Lands Investment after finding out that we can request to reduce our interest rate on our, our current loans, drinking water, SRF loans. We kind of haven't been able to get connected very well. Well, we met again last week. And they sent me information and wanted to know if we wanted to decrease our interest on our current loans down to 1%. And if, if we want to do that, which I'm sorry if we don't, we're fools because we're giving away money that we don't even spend. It'll be on the State Lands Investment Board June meeting agenda. We just need to identify two signatories that can sign the required documents. My recommendation is have the mayor as one signatory, Clark Caggerty as a second signatory, and we move forward with this. I'm sorry, I did not have time to go through and figure out how much money the savings will be, but I will have that by the next council meeting.
What's the current rate?
If I remember, then I think two of the loans are 2.5, no, three loans are 2.5, and one of the loans is 1.5.
Down to 1?
Down to 1.
Does the council entertain a motion to provide myself and Clark Caggerty as signatories on the percentage reduction on our current SRF loans?
Excellent.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Is there any discussion?
Well, should we bring up that the state just did a 25% reduction of the, you know, state property taxes? So they probably need money now. I don't know if we should. Mr. Councilman, this money can't be used in that pocket. It comes out of different pockets.
Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Passes.
Thank you. Landfill one remediation, there's nothing really ready to report. There is another item to report on. We advertised for a bid for the trench drain work, repair work that we need to do. And we received three bids. The lowest bid was Julio Poglin, at $24,900. We currently do have the money to move forward with this, and I would recommend awarding the bid to Julio Poglin for the trench drain repair.
Well, so we can talk about it as soon as.
So we have a motion to approve the trench drain work?
Yeah, and with Julio, it's 25.
We have a motion to approve the trench drain work?
Yeah, and with Julio, it's 25.
$34,900.
Okay. Do you have a motion and second? Is there any discussion?
I, okay, who is Julio?
He's not a longstanding carpenter in Brown. He's better out.
So we know him?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, that's my only question.
Yeah, I'll throw it at him. Either local or were local at one time, so.
Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion passes.
Thank you. Maybe we'll get some barricades out of there eventually. We will go talk to the residents before we start work because our intent is to close all that East Main down at the bottom so they can get in there and do the work as fast as they can and get it done.
Right, you might want to put a sign up the top of the street too so people can.
We'll probably put one at the top and then one down by Seminole, directing them to turn there. We have approval from Office of State Lands Investment on our bid package for the 2025 improvements project. We would like to begin advertising and open the project for bid. My recommendation is to, or my request is to advertise and open the project for bidding as stated in the bidding advertisement.
This one?
Yes. We will begin advertising this week in the newspaper, local newspaper and on Quest C D N. We have a pre-bid meeting May 5th. We would close the bidding at 1:00 PM local time on May 14th and open bids at that time.
Do we have a motion to approve the advertisement for bids for the 2025 improvement project?
So what?
Second. We have a motion properly seconded, or moved in properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion passes.
That one's been two years coming, so. My next item, we have the, we wanted to wait until after we knew whether or not, or what kind of funding we were gonna have for the coordination system. Since we received full funding on that project, we still have money budgeted to purchase a new skid steer through our budget. We have the bid package ready and ready to advertise for this, a new skid steer. We would be looking similar to a Cat 260 to replace our aging S250 bobcat skid steer. We would request to be able to advertise and open this up for bidding.
Do we have a motion to approve the bid process for the purchase of a, of a new skid steer for the city shop?
So what?
We have motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Then how long of operation before you get your new skid steer, is it these days?
They, everybody we've talked to has units in stock.
Okay, well, you'll be selling the bobcat?
No, we're gonna keep it as a yard, yarded piece of equipment.
Okay.
So we keep something in the yard to unload and load with forks and move snow. Other than that, the skid steer's really too worn out to do much of anything else. There's far too much work to do, much more than that, so.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any discussion? I'll throw something out there. We needed to replace those machines for a long time. So I think it's great that you lined some highway on that, Greg.
Yeah, the one we're replacing is a 2002 model. And has almost 10,000 hours on it, so, with three, three engines right now.
Yeah, we've been getting nicked and dimed by those things for a long time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion passes.
My last item, we did find one of the two pickups were requested at the last meeting. We found a 2018 Ford F-150 XL with 67,000 miles. We requested $30,000. We found one for $23,000. This one's for $23,000 in spearfish. It's going to replace a 1999 Ford pickup, F-150. We would request a purchase this pickup.
Do we have a motion to approve the purchase of the new pickup?
Buy that pickup. That's a good deal, our pickup.
Do we have a motion? You moved? I didn't hear moved. Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I was kind of weak, folks. Did everybody vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion passes. That's great.
It's much needed. Both pieces of equipment we're planning on replacing have cost us nothing but money. Other than that, are there any questions under your desk?
Now, what was the, about?
Landfill remediation.
Oh, landfill remediation. We thought we'd have more to report on this meeting, but we don't.
Okay. I don't.
I apologize.
I missed that.
Yeah. We're not quite there yet.
Any further questions?
Yeah, Greg, I do have one for you. It was actually one that Ann brought up at the last meeting in regards to volleyball net in Down Park.
Yes, I saved a email from Stacy about this. That is a project we've wanted to do for about 20 years and just never got around to it. Our plan is to turn it quarter turn and reset it.
That's, when I looked at it, that's kind of what I was thinking too. If we could turn it, we'll make it run north and south and it's not an issue.
Parks Lee Travis Peterson, I have talked about this, doing this for over 20 years and it just, it keeps getting put off. We keep forgetting about it in winter whenever it'd be best to do it. With the new mats we bought for the cemetery, we'll try and get it done in the next few weeks. But we are overrevenueing that now as well. And that's been torn up from deer getting tangled up in it.
So I'm gonna report back to her that you're gonna work on it.
Yeah, no, it's, it's one of, one of those projects keeps getting pushed on backwards.
And you're turning what a quarter turn?
Volleyball net runs east-west now, or north-south.
Okay.
Yeah, through the way that I explained it.
Right, okay.
Any further questions for Supervisor Greg Stone? I have one. So how did the guys fare at the rural water conference? I saw Justin and Zach.
Yes. I think that Zach, his brain was full by the end of that. This is his first conference, first rural formal education in water wastewater. He's one of their new hires that's interested in becoming licensed for water and wastewater, so. They liked it. They, they thought it was really good.
Cool. Thank you. Moving on to item number three points, Chief Derek Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Apologize, I didn't get this handed out before. I thought I turned them all, but it turns out I turned five of them in my, in my paperwork. I didn't cover some.
Thank you.
My first item is calls for service since April 7th of this year. Newcastle Police Department 106, it consisted of 23 traffic stops. One domestic violence call, three traffic crashes, and various other more minor calls. Weston County Sheriff's Office 100, Upton Police Department 2, Newcastle Volunteer Fire Department 1, Weston County Fire Protection Districts 2, Upton Volunteer Fire Department 1, Newcastle Ambulance 15, and I broke those down as Councilman Butts requested. Seven were within the city and five of those were transfers from the hospital. Weston County, there was four, Upton, there was one. Osage, there was two, and there was one in Custer County. I think it was a Custer Highlands address. Weston County, there was four, Upton, there was one. Osage, there was two, and there was one in Custer County. I think it was a Custer Highlands address. So that may, may give everybody a little bit better idea of where the ambulance services were going. And then Upton Ambulance fielded two calls. And then just a couple of other little notes. The new phone system was installed. And so far it seems to be working really well. It's a relatively inexpensive system, so I'm actually really happy with the quality of it for what we paid for it. It's significantly cheaper than the old system we were using, so that's a good thing. Of the four applicants we received for peace officer positions, this is not such good news. One applicant rescinded his application and the other three will not be available for an interview at the time we are going to interview. The only interview we're going to end up doing on the 23rd is the one applicant we have for the Community Service Officer position. Recruitment and marketing campaign video put together by Newsletter Journal has been completed and is being distributed currently. I got a call from Bob Bonner the other day. And he said he wanted to do a more localized campaign for us on top of the broader campaign, and he would do it for free. It's quite a bit simpler. It's just an advertisement. It's not a video. But he, if I understood what he was telling me correctly, he's gonna, he was kicking that out today as soon as I approved it, so. That should be going out as well. And the last thing on there, we have started to receive a lot of complaints about ordinance violations from neighbors and other people that we've actually gotten started on the process. Because the way the ordinance is written and the way the process works, it takes quite some time in order to get results out of the ordinance enforcement, so. I didn't really have time to put anything together for this meeting. But I would like to put together a short presentation for the council for the next meeting with some of the problem areas and maybe some ideas for improving those couple of ordinances that we deal with a lot. To try to expedite the process a little bit and better gain compliance from people. We have instances where there's orders from a judge to do certain things and they basically just don't do it. And the problem actually in one instance has gotten notably worse, so. We need to go back to the drawing.
We need to do something to that too, because that's what happened.
Yeah, but it'll, it'll be kind of a group effort because we need to make sure it's written in such a way that it's effective. We need to make sure it's written in such a way that it's constitutional. And we just need to make sure we cover all of our, all of our bases when we go to rewriting a couple of these ordinances. If the council's okay with it, I'll put together a little slideshow and put it up on the screen and show you what we have now, where the problems are, and try to provide some suggestions for improvement if that will be acceptable for everyone.
Yeah, we do achieve. Yeah. We like presentations.
And that's all I have to report for this time.
Does anybody have any further questions for you?
Couple. Well, thanks for your response on that question we had with some concerned people on some issues we had going on.
You bet.
They know that something's trying to be done. But like you said, sometimes your hands are kind of tied with the way the process goes, but.
Yeah.
The other one was on the second bullet. He said they weren't gonna have interviews at the time he had scheduled. Was there some other times that you were looking at scheduling those or?
We haven't scheduled anything beyond the 23rd. Without providing too much detail, one of these people has done this exact same thing to me once already, so I'm not real excited. excited to help work around those things.
Doesn't give you a warm fuzzy feeling right away?
No, it, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you see your video?
Did you?
One on my, on Facebook.
Yeah, I shared it on Facebook too and it didn't get much traffic.
Yeah.
Yeah, I shared it and it got shared about four or five times and, and then, so it's not, it's not bouncing very high right now.
Yeah. Yeah, um, he did say they would try to tweak things as it went along to see if they could get better results, but that stuff is honestly kind of out of my field of knowledge, so I don't really know. I guess if I was good at marketing, I probably wouldn't be in the situation I'm in, so.
Uh, and I, I received a flyer for customer, uh, search and seizure class down in Larnell. So I'll, uh, I'll forward that to you, Chief.
Okay, sounds good.
Does anybody else have anything else for the chief?
Yeah, chief, have you made any headway with, uh, bids for the roof?
Uh, no, I have not received the bids and I, I honestly think the one contractor probably fixed the problem. He found where it was leaking, um, and he sealed that up. So I don't know whether to waste the time on getting the bids or the, the thing he says, the, and, and of course he's a contractor, he's trying to sell you a product. But he said once that water gets under there, it's going to continue to degrade the insulation. I'm, I'm assuming that's what it is. Correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, but it's like a foam board type of stuff that lays under there. He said it's gonna, it's, it's almost like a cancer. It's just gonna continue to degrade once it's been wet because it doesn't really have a way to dry out.
Sure.
Um, so. I'm not familiar with the membrane roofs at all. Greg would have more knowledge than I would. But we can follow up with them if, if you guys would like to see the bids and see if they would get them kicked over.
Yes, if, if you're comfortable with, with the current.
Yeah, I mean. I think I kind of.
I think it would be wise to budget within the next three to five years for a new roof. That would give you time to draw bid specs. Uh, I'm sure engineer Bartlet can definitely help with that or we could hire an architectural engineer to, to assist with that. There are several patches that were put on after the fact. Membrane roasts realized heavily on the glue that holds those together. And it may be better to do the bigger project and actually pitch the roof.
Yeah.
To where we can deal with, we're, we're no longer holding water like a swimming pool. Because there are areas of that roof that when it melts, you might have a foot of water.
Sure.
So the best option would be to pitch the roof that you should do in Wyoming due to snow instead of a flat roof. As a contractor years and years ago, dealt with a lot of flat roofs and one thing I will guarantee you is eventually they are going to leak faster than any pitch roof I've ever seen.
Guaranteed.
It'll all leak.
Yeah, flat roofs actually cost significantly more, not only maintain, but to replace, might have to come time to replace.
And that's, that's one of the things one of the contractors brought up is those things. They felt like this roof wasn't prepped correctly because it should have a slight dome to it, is what he was telling me. To, to make sure that water does get to the outsides and there's multiple places in it that are mentally low spots and, and the water's not going away. And he said that if I understand correctly, like magnifies the UV rays, so it causes the roof to degrade faster when there's standing water on it, so.
That's a fact.
Anything further for chief?
No.
Moving on to item number four, attorney Dublin Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the only thing I have to report is that, um, public works supervisor Greg Stumpf sent me, uh, the water and sewer ordinance revisions that he was looking into, um, and I am reviewing those as of right now. Um, I should have those done by the next council meeting and, uh, by that point in time, I assume that Greg and I can, basically just go over the council with whatever revisions we're thinking on in terms of those ordinances. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Does anybody have anything for attorney Dublin Hughes? Alright, thanks, Dublin. Uh, moving on to claims against the city dated April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Your honor, I move that this August body's bills.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion passes. The city's going to pay those bills.
Good.
We have a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing on, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, all those signify by saying nay. Motion passes. We adjourned at eight eleven.